Maybe, big RBI.
State.
State, okay. She is not here. Zoe Colburn. Zoe was one of our pitchers and outfielders, and Zoe also led us in the World Series with batting average. Adrian Ortiz, our speed demon. Count on her to get in, you can count on Adrian to get in a pickle or something crazy. And also, one of our best outfielders. Adrian is a second-year returner. She played with us last year in the series as well. Katie Coldiron, our pitcher, our lead P1. She is not here tonight. Katie held it down on the mound very well for us. So, we want to give her a applause. Bailey Adford. Bailey hit a homerun. In West Region. Was it, which game was that? To Nevada. She hit a homerun and also played outfield for us. Good job, Bailey. Mike Mann. Mike was our first base coach and also life mentor, counselor, team mom, rapper. Rapper, teen comedian. I don't know, lots of titles.
Oh, yes, he does.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Mike was a big part of this whole venture and would have died without him. And where is she? Loretta, where are you? Loretta Washington. Loretta, this is her third coaching run with me. We did a run with some older girls a couple of years ago, but Loretta, this is her third run. And last year was a coach with us in the series and it was good to have her by our side. And also, where's Brandon? Brandon. This wouldn't have happened without Brandon either. When it came to Brandon's time, resources, or belief, like it was unlimited with him. So, thank you, Brandon. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, you guys.
I just want to say that it's really important that when we have these things going on in our community, that the social media part is extremely important. And we were getting updates all the time. And it's really cool because we just love this kind of stuff. All of us do. I mean, I coached soccer for lord knows how many years. I was involved in baseball and water polo and tennis and volleyball with the kids. We just love this, that when these children do well and do extremely well, we want to make sure that we recognize them. And it was great. You guys were pumping us with information. It was like every second was going on. Anytime you had a fundraiser, anything was going on. And I will say to the parents, you guys rock. Seriously, because you guys need to thank your parents for everything that happened because they got you there. And these people up here made sure you were safe, even if your bats didn't come with you. Everything came on the bus, the kids, everything except their bats. It was like, really, seriously. But anyway, congratulations.
We need to speak on this woman here, just briefly.
I'm gonna give you the mic.
Kristen, along with Brandon, Mike and I as well, a few years ago had this vision, right? She executed, along with her support, all of this. Manifested it for these girls. Girls really made the impossible happen and continues to make the impossible happen. And she's the most humble leader that we could be blessed with. You know, so I, she never gets enough credit and I just want to give you that credit. Thank you.
I'll get some pictures real quick. Do you guys want to do some pictures of their family real quick? And then we're gonna do the boys. Okay? Yes, you want to do pictures? I want to get you guys first. You got it? Is that a good one? You sure? Thank you, everybody. Okay, our next. Congratulations, another round of applause. Kristen, thank you. Laverne Little League Senior Baseball. Now that I can see. Senior Little League is the highest division of Little League and is the last chance for any youth player to play and possibly advance to the World Series. Little League has had seniors for the past five years and this year the team advanced the furthest of any team. They went undefeated in the regular season and advanced to the district tournament. In districts, they beat Pomona twice to win the district title and advanced to the sectional tournament. In the sectional tournament, they went 4-1 to advance to the state tournament. In the state tournament, the team went 4-2 to advance to the West Region tournament. These are a lot of advances, guys. Congratulations. I think a round of applause already for that. In the West Region tournament, the team went 2-2. The team was managed by Brandon Mulder and was coached by Joshua Alba and Kevin Duffield. The team roster is as follows. Coaches, come on up. You're gonna call these names. Congratulations, boys. Congratulations to Steven Cameron.
All right, well, first off, I want to say thanks to everybody that came and attended today. Also to the girls. All right, you guys did a phenomenal job. I love following you guys' journey and it was impressive. And as you guys go along in your lives, you'll realize how special these moments were. So, I just want to say thank you for letting me be a part of that. And Kristen, phenomenal job. It's been a ride. It's been a ride. So proud of you guys.
I feel like I was actually inspired in that one night when we called him Face the Time.
So, the group will have, yeah, we'll get back to that. But hey, just real quick on the journey. So, just for people out there that are watching seniors. So, I know Tim alluded to, we've had it for five years. So, what seniors is, is the highest level of baseball. Majority of the players are high school players. Well, what I thought was really cool this season is that mostly for the last previous four years, it's just been Benita High School players. This year was like first year we've kind of expanded out to other areas. And with seniors, we're allowed to absorb different districts. So, we have multiple high schools represented within the area. So, I thought it was a really cool team. The parents, it's a wild ride because they get thrown together so fast. There's a lot of what ifs and there's a lot of unknowns. And for you guys to make the commitment and the sacrifices that you guys did to make it happen, I know the boys are thankful for it, but we're thankful for it as well. So, round of applause to all the parents. And ultimately, I coached with these guys the last two seasons and couldn't have done it without them because I got hectic schedule and I wasn't able to make it to a lot of the games and stuff like that in the beginning of the season. And you guys picked up the slack and did a phenomenal job. We leaned on each other for decisions in the game and support throughout this entire journey. They drove the vans up to Oakland. So, obviously, if that didn't happen, those boys wouldn't have got there. We went through a lot of trials and tribulations up there in Oakland, to say the least. And through all of that, without their level heads and without us coming together and figuring out different types of plans, who knows what would have happened up there? But thank God, we got our boys there and back home safe. And the games, the games were tough. So, yeah, we won, we did win that state tournament to make it to the West Region, but it wasn't easy. We had to win four games in three days. And we came back and won a nail biter at the end. We were down, we were down, yeah, we were down three runs in the last inning and we ended up coming through with some clutch hits. I think it was Corbin's hit up the middle that they got us through. And we went on a double, on a double steal type of deal. Hester came across and scored that. And I think Dominic Garcia was on the base running. I'm not gonna call the play because it's on the internet, so we don't want people to know what it was. But it was a good play. But yeah, that's what we got. So, first off, hey, boys, thanks. Good to see you guys all again. Haven't seen these boys in a long time. So, it was really great to see these fresh faces. I couldn't imagine doing this with another group. You guys were awesome. Traveling up to Oakland and seeing you guys play, compete and battle. And more importantly, just gelling and bonding and having fun in the hotel rooms. That was, that was a sight to see. So, I hope you guys had fun. I think a lot of you guys maybe had a little too much fun. But definitely memories remain and look forward to doing it again. All right, so that's my little steal. Now, we'll go over the rosters. All right. We've got number one, Carter Alba. Carter Alba is out there. He's on the football field. So, he's not here today, but Carter was our catcher. Come with some clutch hits. So, good job, Carter. That's his dad right there. Second guy, Dominic Garcia. He wasn't at school today, wasn't feeling well, so he stayed home. But Dominic also was a contributor to our team, middle infield, second leadoff type of guy. So, here's one of those cross-school guys that we talked about. Integral Par, right? Heard a lot about this kid. Not only did he play on our senior team, he was an umpire at our Little League as well. Ashton Romero. Ashton also was the only one, I think there's two home runs hit in the West Region. And Ashton hit one of them. It was a shot to the left-center gap. Hit the net. I think it's probably, if it wasn't for the net, it still be going, right, Ashton?
Yeah.
This guy played with us last season. Came back for a second year, pitched his butt off. Without him, we probably wouldn't have advanced through as far as we did. Where is he? Is he not here today? No, Jack? Jack Rudanendkin. He was just here. All right, Jack Rudanendkin. All right, this guy right here. He was a stud for us, man. He was a leader. He, when he wasn't on, he was constantly just hyping guys up on the bench, hyping guys up on the field. And I'm actually sad to hear that, you know, when we came back to school, I was looking for this guy at practice. I'm like, what the heck? Where is he at? They're like, Coach, seniors was his last hurrah. I go, what? What do you mean? He was swinging the stick, man. He was running hard, he was playing well. I mean, he was, what are you talking about? They're like, no, he's done. So, then when I saw him on the track the other day, I kind of gave him a little trouble. I said, if you would have let me know that it was your last hurrah, we would have started you like every game. And he was like, no, Coach, I was just happy to be there. But he's a humble, humble kid. He's gonna do some good things in his future. Matt Hester. All right, this kid's been with us for as long as he could have played, seniors with us. Loved watching him grow up through the Little Leagues. And I found a good piece to see these kids grow up from, you know, the minor division of Laverne Little League to where they are now. And then obviously blessed enough to see them continue their high school careers. But this kid's been a joy to be around. He's a humble kid as well, a great team player. Literally was a utility guy for us. Literally played everything. Probably, maybe, not this year, but he's definitely caught for us. But not this year. But pitched when we needed him to come in and pitch. Pitched us out of some clutch, clutch situations when we were out of pitching. And again, like I said before, got us that key hit. And I think he's a fan of the ladies' fan over there, Mr. Corbin Duffield. This guy is not here. I don't see him, but he was our shortstop. He's a gamer. Did what he had, and he came through and pitched for us too. A lot of these guys out here came and threw off the bump and got us out of innings. This guy's not here, but he's a stud. We really appreciated his support in his play. Diego Vazquez. Next kid, same thing, man. You see this kid grow up throughout the league and, you know, got close with his family and comes from a great, a great family, great set, good morals, good values on this kid. And he's a good kid, man, to where we see this guy really gel and grow and prosper. He's worked super hard over the last few seasons to kind of refine his game and strengthen the areas that he needed to strengthen. And he came out this season, he was a, he was a stud for us. And I look forward to seeing what he can do. He's also played with us a few years on our intermediate team and junior team. Jason Montoya. He's a celebrity. He's a celebrity. All right, next guy's not here, but he was our outfielder, center fielder, leadoff guy. He did a lot of stuff for us. Got hurt, so wasn't able to make the trip. But yeah, obviously, he contributed to the point to where if, you know, we didn't have him, it'd be tough to make it. Spencer Savage. Next kid, man, he's a stud, man. I love this kid. He, I had an opportunity to meet him. He came new to the area, you know, last season. Was on my freshman team. Absolute stud. Love his attitude, work ethic. He's a gamer. Again, he did whatever he asked us to do. Was a leadoff guy, three-hole guy. Played in the infield, played in the outfield, come in and pitch. No matter what it was, it was yes coaching. He did it with a smile. And he's gritty. Love the way that he plays. Austin Owens. All right, this kid right here. He's been around a while too. I mean, he played on our, I think he played on our inaugural intermediate team. Inaugural, yeah. He played on our inaugural intermediate team. He kind of grew up with the ranks with us. And he wasn't originally gonna play and things worked out in his schedule and he was able to play for us. And boy, did he help. When you get down in these tournaments, you get low on pitching and you need versatility, you need guys that can do it all. And he came up and he helped us out. He pitched in some tough games. I think when we got a little bit of trouble with Oakland, we needed to bring in another guy, kind of change of pace. And he came and he did a great job. Gavin Reed. All right, this guy is not here. But again, he's been with us for a while. Played in a lot of things. We got a lot of guys. We're gonna keep going here, so hopefully there's not a lot more on the agenda. But we're gonna keep going down this list. This is what it takes to make it to the Senior League West Region. I just want to, we need depth, right? And what we got is depth on this roster. We've got, he's not here tonight. I actually just saw him over at Circle K. He was getting a Polar Pop on the way to his next, on the way to his next event. He stretched in. But he's a stud too. All right, he's gonna be on the basketball court. He's gonna be back in the diamond later this month. But he's working hard, man. He's a stud. Colton Perez. All right, this guy's another Laverne, Laverne K., Laverne Little League. Seen him grow up through the ranks. Dad helped out managing, coach on teams. And again, to see these kids come through, it's been, it's been special. I think he went away for a little bit and then he came back, you know, to the city. And he's a versatile player, right? And he played multiple positions for us. And a lot of the times, you know, he was one of those kids to where if he wasn't playing, he never had his head down. He was always in the game. He was a loud cheerleader. And then when he got in there, he had a hot bat. He was a guy that we can come on and count on for a clutch hit. Aaron Duran. All right, this next kid, another cross, another cross-school kid, right? I haven't had a chance to coach this kid prior to this season. Heard a lot about him. And when he showed up to the field, he didn't disappoint. I mean, he runs, he comes with a little bit of swag. He's got, you know, he's just that type of guy. Reminds me a lot of Spencer. So, we had, between him and him, with him and Spencer in the outfield, we had it locked down. There wasn't a lot of worry about a ball that got hit to the gap or a ball that got hit out there. We knew that it was gonna get tracked down. He's fast, he can do a lot of things for us on the bases. And more importantly, he was just a good guy. Good guy in the hotel, right? Didn't have, was always super polite. And we appreciated him. I really enjoyed having him on the team. From Damian High School, Jordan Young. Oh, we just call him Jody White. All right, guys. Fifteen more to go. All right? And then we'll get to the next squad. All right, next guy, another Laverne Little League kid. Grew up in the, grew up in the ranks. Came through. Again, didn't have a chance to coach him, but had a chance to coach with him or around him last season. Liked what I saw on the practice field when he came out to the field. I was super impressed. Again, man, these kids were just, a lot of your parents raised really, really good kids. I couldn't have asked for a better, more polite group, humble. That's just what these guys are. They know how to have fun, but they know how to lock in. This guy, again, played everywhere. I mean, he did, he played in the infield, he played in the outfield, he hit multiple parts of the lineup. And again, he came up with some clutch hits. He pitched a couple, I think, strong games for us in the sectional tournament. And then even in the state tournament. He did a great job. He came down and showed up for one game to help us get through those four games in three days. Jayden Rodriguez-Burnham. All right, next guy, same thing, man. Another Laverne Little League kid. Got to know him and his family over the years. Again, great family, great kid. Dad supports the Little League. He supported us throughout through coaching All-Star teams and regular season teams. This kid was a stud growing up in Little League. And to see him continue to grow and develop and be even a better player than he was back in Little League. And the sky's the limit for this guy if he continues to work hard. He just has to stay away from like TikTok challenges and things like that. But if he stays focused, if he stays focused and he works hard the way that he has been, I haven't seen him out there work. He's super smooth with the glove. He can swing the stick. He can do a lot of the things that baseball guys need to do. Cody White. All right, we're down to the last couple of guys here. I'm gonna skip to, there's one that's not here, right? One that's not here, came through with us, some big hits. Turned out to be one of our leadoff hitters when we got up to West Region. Normally a catcher, but he played the outfield for us and did a great job. Dan Moon, yes? All right, here we go. Next guy. Again, had the pleasure of meeting this kid over the, over the past school year when I coached them both as freshmen. Didn't get to coach one more than I did the, or coach one more than I did the other. But every chance I got to be around this kid, it just put a smile on my face. Every single time he saw me, it was, hi, Coach. How are you, Coach? And both of you guys said it, okay? So, I'm just gonna say, both of these kids are super polite. This kid was always there. Even when I came through on campus late, he would always pause and say hello. His family was, opened up their homes to us for a team dinner while we were stuck in there. We can only eat so much hotel food and McDonald's. And we're lucky enough that they had family up there in Oakland, opened up their homes. We needed that getaway. And not only that, he was an absolute stud. He was a pitcher for us. He struggled in one game, but the one thing I love about him is no matter how hard it gets, he keeps a smile on his face and he works hard. He came back in the second game and literally pitched a gem. We just couldn't get it done for him with the bats, but he absolutely pitched probably the best game I've ever seen this kid pitch. The sky's the limit for him. And I'm excited to see him in the next three years. Camden Farina. All right, last but not least. Got a chance to coach this kid last year. I've known about him for a while, right? Just through Josh and Kevin and things like that and through the baseball circuit. His brother came through Benita. His brother was an absolute stud for us. Great family. Like I said, you guys did a great job with him and all of you guys. Again, super polite, humble, super hard on himself at times. Sometimes too much so. And he's been working on it. His confidence has been building. And he's come through so clutch for us to get through here. He played anywhere we asked him to do, even shortstop at times, right? And he still reminds me of that. But he pitched some huge games, came in and shut the game down when we needed to, got the clutch hit, stole the extra bag, took the extra base. He's, again, gritty gamer, humble kid, man. Can't wait to see what he does in the future. Jared Cosma. All right, so they're gonna go out and the next team's gonna come in. So, for the next roster. All right, that's all I got. That's all I got. Thank you, guys. Thank you, parents. Thank you, council members. Thank you, council members.
That's it? Good? Congratulations, boys. Thank you, everybody, for coming. And this is a really exciting council meeting, so you guys can all stay or you can go right now. And we'll take a little recess. Thank you all. Congratulations to all the teams. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call Mr. Duff.
Councilmember Cash.
Present, sir.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lal.
President.
Mayor Pro-Tim Crosby.
Here.
Mayor Hepper.
Here.
Let's see. We have an introduction, don't we, tonight? You said the best for last, huh? We went through all the kids and now we have a fire marshal. Deputy, excuse me. You know, after thirty kids, you just gotta get worn out. You're gonna wear all of the hats.
Perfect.
That'll be one of many. Well, Brandon was appointed on, now, this I don't get October 3rd, 2022. I don't think that.
I don't think that, is that when you're gonna be appointed?
Today.
His primary responsibility would be operations. He has twenty-six years of experience, most really served as a deputy fire chief of operations in the Orange County area and serving as the California Fire Chiefs Association Operations Second Section President. Now, now the rap sheet. When he got out of prison, oh, excuse me, that's the wrong, sorry. Brandon Cohny began his career with San Bernardino Fire Department in nineteen ninety-seven. In 2015, he transferred laterally as a captain to the Fullerton Fire Department, where he was promoted to battalion chief in 2016, then to division chief of training in 2018. During this time, he was also president of the Orange County Fire Chiefs Association Training Section. In 2020, he promoted to deputy chief operations and became president of the Orange County Fire Chiefs Association Operations Section. For 2223, he will also be the California Fire Chiefs Association Operations Section President. Congratulations, again. Brandon is joined tonight by his wife of twenty-three years, Barbara, his children Bren and Bryce, and his parents Earl and Lauren Cohny. Barbara is a nurse and the director of education at Riverside County Hospital. Bren is twenty-two and recently became an ICU nurse at Riverside Community Hospital. I have an infinity of nurses, I have five in my family, including my wife, so I hack goes off to you guys. You married well. And you had wonderful children. Bryce is twenty and recently became a probationary firefighter here in Laverne after serving as one of our first ambulance operators in our new program. Congratulations to you and congratulations to the family. Welcome to Laverne. Chief, you got a few words. I think someone's gonna pin her husband.
I'm extraordinarily excited this evening as Laverne Fire has obviously rebuilt itself over the last year. We continue now as we move forward and continue to build this department to, by attracting extraordinary talent. Chief Cohny comes to, comes to us with an exceptional amount of experience and expertise, unparalleled, quite frankly, in the industry. So I've worked with Chief Cohny for, for several years at Sumerian City and at Fullerton. When we put this process out there, I was very hopeful that he could put in and come join us up here at Laverne and I'm very, very thankful that he did put in for it. Our department is going to be extraordinarily better than it already is right now because of the level of training and operations and tactics that you're gonna bring to us. It's gonna put us in a whole never, whole other level as we look to expand our horizons at the county and state level. So congratulations, very excited to have you as my second command. Very honored to have you as my second command. So I look forward to the future.
I just wanna say that Chief Nick, that you said when you came on that you were gonna rebuild this, the fire department for our city and I just wanna welcome you, Deputy Fire Marshal Brandon. I'm not gonna get that right. One of these days I'll get it right, you know? It's those kids, they suck the energy out of me. We're excited to have you, but truly a testament to Chief Nick in bringing all these people on and reorganizing this and really making Laverne one of the premier fire departments in the whole Sangre Valley, if not the state. And with our ambulance program and all of our firefighters and our new programs, we are excited and they're all right here with us. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Congratulations, firefighters. We love you to death. Don't make, and again, love to the family. And I promise I'll get his title right, I'll be here for a few years, so. But congratulations, we're just excited that we're gonna have great coverage for our community, for us to keep our residents safe and really watch our community closely and give services to other cities. At a cost, but whatever, that's another. Thank you very much, Chief. Yes, pictures, please. Have to locate fish in Laverne. Thank you, Brandon. He's taller than you do. He'll also, I forgot to hand you this. He's walking good with his hands, you look at the gap. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Congrats. If you guys would like to exit, I know this is exciting business, I know we have half the fire department here. If you guys would like to go, we'd appreciate it, but if you wanna keep our community safe, do it at the same time. Congratulations, everybody, thank you, everyone, for being here. With that announcement, Sherry Best, I think you have an announcement to make right now. Does anybody wants to make an announcement that's something happening in the community, come on up?
Several things. Hey, we are back. And on the tenth of October, that's a week from tonight, at Hillcrest Retirement Community, starting at 4:00 PM, we have a presentation entitled Deo de la Muertas, A Time For Honoring And Sherry. It is being presented by Roberto Martidis, who will discuss the history and customary court practices associated with this day of remembrance and joyful celebration of families and friends of loved ones who have died. I'm really looking forward to this. Our site will feature an ofrenda or an altar and the parts of the ofrenda will be discussed and their purpose will be described. And I think this will be very educational. It is free, it is open to the public and families are encouraged to attend. So bring children. So it's at four o'clock and because it's at Hillcrest, people need to check in with the door and they have to adhere to verification of vaccination and then any kind of masking and other kinds of requirements that Hillcrest requires because we do that to keep our seniors safe. So that's on the tenth. I would also like to announce it on the fifteenth. On Saturday, the Laverne Historical Society is sponsoring a visit to the Cheech Marin Museum of Chicano Art and Culture. This just opened very recently and so we're very excited. We have a block of twenty tickets and we're going to have a dozen-led tour. So if you're interested in signing up for that, you need to get in touch with me so I can put you on the, the reserve list. So, and give you the, the parameters of that trip. We have a lot of other things scheduled, which I'll bring up other, other times, but I do wanna report that the nineteen thirty-eight International is back at Panina High School and we have anned it in the November nineteenth car show. So you're gonna see the truck there at the car show and hopefully some of the kids from the shop class are gonna be talking about the work that they're doing to make the truck beautiful and functional again. So with that, we're off for a great year of activities with the Historical Society. If you would please take one of these, pass them around and then JR, do you mind putting the rest up the table?
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherry. Someone else wish on announcements?
Yes, Wednesday, October nineteenth, the Chamber will be hosting the Twenty-Third Annual Taste of Laverne Food Festival. It will be held once again at Coastal Helicopter Hanger at Bracket Field Airport. The event will be followed by our Third Annual Restaurant Week. That runs Thursday, the twentieth through Sunday, the twenty-third, where all your favorite restaurants will be offering special menus at special prices. You can find, purchase tickets and find out all the information at tastelaverne.com.
Thank you, Leah. Adia.
Good evening, council mayor. I just wanted to let the residents know and also anybody else who watches the video, Pomona Fairplex will be hosting the Oktoberfest. It is on the weekends, so October seventh, General Mission is eighteen fifty. October eighth, fourteen, fifteen, and the twenty-first, at General Mission is twenty-two dollars. The time is from six to eleven PM. They're gonna be serving authentic German food, Bavarian music, and of course, beer. So just wanted to let everybody know that that event is taking place. Thank you.
The magic word, beer. Thank you. Anybody else have any announcements? And we will move to the consent calendar. Did we have anything pulled, Mr. Duff?
No.
Any questions from council, anything on the consent calendar? With that, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Vote, please.
I'm gonna pass five votes.
Thank you, JR. We move to, um... Seven, other matters. I've got it right here, thank you. I lost my papers and all the shuffle with all the kids and our new employee. Other matters, item number seven. Mr. Duff.
Yes, the staff report will be given by Candace Blowcock, principal planner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
It's a little more sensitive than you.
So at the city council meeting held on February twenty-second this year, staff presented the Small Business Rescue Grant Program using a portion of the city's allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which we're gonna call ARPA. A total amount of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars was, has been spent to date, leaving a balance of about four hundred thousand dollars unspent. The Chamber has advertised on multiple platforms to businesses and have been reaching out to businesses personally to be sure everyone who may need help has been notified. At this point in the program, the number of applications being submitted has drastically diminished. This is why staff in the Chamber of Commerce are asking the city council to approve some changes to the guidelines to spend up to a hundred thousand dollars on an expanded program and closing the program at about a total spend of seven hundred thousand dollars, assuming the hundred thousand dollars is fully spent. The changes that are being proposed require that the business applying for the grant would have to have been mandated to shut down during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, does not exceed a maximum of fifty full-time or part-time equivalent employees, and submit the application on or before December first, two thousand twenty-two. The revised redline version of the guidelines can be reviewed in more detail as attachment A to this report. If these changes are approved tonight, this will leave about three hundred thousand dollars unused to fund another very urgent and important project, the Fire Station One Gender Compliance Project. As the fire service continues to expand its diversity, equity, and inclusion, it remains a top priority for the Laverne Fire Department to ensure that they are prepared for anyone seeking to join the ranks. Currently, Fire Station One, which also serves the city's emergency operating, operations center, does not provide restroom equality for fire department personnel or anyone utilizing the EOC for training. Having just hired the department's first full-time female, this is an urgent matter that needs to be addressed immediately. When staff first learned of this deficit, the first thought was to use community development block grant money. However, after contacting the Los Angeles County Department Authority and months of work, it was ultimately denied. This left staff urgently looking for funding elsewhere. Considering the lack of OSHA gender compliant bathrooms and dorm area privacy leaves the city vulnerable to liability and lack of equality for all of those who use the facility. As part of the project, this would open up the opportunity to construct a much-needed workspace for the new deputy fire chief as well as captain's workspace among the upstairs crew quarters. If the city council approves the transfer of funds for about three hundred thousand dollars to the Fire Station One Gender Compliance Project, that project will return back before the city council at a later date for your review as well as the potential need for any supplemental funding. Staff recommends that the city council approve the update to the Small Business Rescue Program and that the reallocation of the remaining unused ARPA funds after the close of the program on December first, two thousand twenty-two. The staff report has an error that says twenty-two thousand two, it should be twenty-twenty-two, reallocating that money to the Fire Station One Gender Compliance Project. I'm available if you have any questions. Leah from the Chamber of Commerce is here, if you have any questions of her. And of course, Fire Chief Chris Nag is also available if you have any questions about that specific project. Thank you.
Do you forward a public comment, any questions for staff, council? It's time for a new one.
I just wanna add a clarifying question for our council. I previously recused myself when it was related to the SBDC and ULC and the Chamber putting forth the program, but since we are talking about allocation of funds, that the program has been approved. I wanna make sure that I'm okay, but if I'm not, I will recuse myself.
You are okay, it's, it's not your conflict, their contract that's being discussed and decided.
Thank you, appreciate the clarification.
Anyone else before you open a public comment?
Has there ever been a time, how much does it cost to build a new fire station?
A lot.
Thank you, Ms. Bokov. We may be calling you back out. We're gonna go to open a public comment right now. Do you have any public comment on this odd matter? Anybody on the line? That would be, tell me when you're ready, General. We're gonna close public comment and bring it up to the dais. Council, any comments before we vote on this item?
I think it's a great idea to repurpose those funds. It's something that we need desperately. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna thank Ms. Bokov and Chief Nate for answering my questions today, especially about this. And Chief, right when you came on, you brought this to our attention right away that we need to make sure that we're updated and so that we can hire the best candidates, no matter who they are. So really appreciate you doing that. And Cash, I know three hundred thousand dollars is probably not enough to even do a bathroom. So, and today's, especially with all OSHA laws and stuff that we have to abide by. So we will get there. Thank you.
I wanna first thank Leah also for bringing this up and I know she brought it to the city because there were some businesses that are, some of the pillars of our community that were kinda stuck and they could not get help. And, and also the staff, Director Shear and Chief Nate. I think this is brilliant, choosing funds that, and we have, we've pushed this thing with our, with our business assistance grant multiple times. I've done it with the mayor, we've all pushed it. I think it's been extremely successful. I appreciate the partnership with the University of Laverne. It was almost, it was probably just about perfect is actually what it was. You guys worked hard for these people. I know there were issues with some of the applicants and didn't quite have their stuff together. You helped them to push these things through and I really appreciate that because these businesses needed it and I saw those audit demands. You know, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money for a small business to really help them. But again, great plan, when they repurpose the money, I think it's great for the fire department. Just like Mr. Crosby said, we can hire people, we can offer those, you know, facilities properly for the new, new hirees. So with that, take a motion?
I move that we approve staff's recommendation to approve updates to the Small Business Rescue Program and that the city council approve the reallocation of the remaining unused Small Business Rescue Program ARPA funds, approximately three hundred thousand dollars after the close of the program on December one, two thousand twenty-two. on December 1st, 2022, to the Fire Station 1 Gender Compliance Project.
Second?
Vote, please.
Hi, I'm in a meeting.
That passed five.
Very good. Congratulations. We'll move forward. Thank you, Leo. We move on to public comments, public communication. Ms. Bocchamp, if you could just state your name and your address, please.
You guys don't have that memory? Deidre Bocchamp, 2516 Amherst. Two meetings ago, when the Pomona Fairplex project was discussed, I made a comment about how it was the first time I had heard of it. Councilmember Lau made a comment of how she had mentioned it back on the August 15th meeting. So one, I owe her an apology. But two, I would like to state that if a council member finds something important enough to make it in their final comments of the meeting, granted, it's not something that has already taken place, that it should be listed on the city's website so that residents can... You know, there's times where people are speaking, you know, the meeting's kind of winding down and people start talking, and you don't always hear clearly, which is something that J.R. and I have been discussing. Thank you for increasing the volume. But I obviously did not hear you, so I apologize for that. And it's something that was just way too important. So I think going forward, it wouldn't be too much trouble to add it to the website for the residents to know. Secondly, I sat on the opposite side of the room today to get a different perspective. And I have to say, I'm extremely disappointed because this entire half of the room cannot see the American flag. You cannot truly pledge allegiance when you cannot make eye contact with the flag. So I am proposing that the council please move the American flag to where the city flag is, since we do not pledge allegiance to that flag, so that everyone in the room has a straight view to the American flag. And with that said, for us patriots, true patriots, I would like to thank the city, as well as public works, for installing the new, the much-needed new brighter light on the American flag that shines outside in the evening, just outside the city chambers. It is so nice to drive by late night, Friday or Saturday, when you're going to In-N-Out, and you see the light shining on the flag.
You just can't wait to see the light.
Yeah. You know, those late SC games, you get hungry. But anyway, seriously, though, that... I have a lot of military in my family, and shining a light on the American flag at night is very important. I don't know if people really realize how important it is. I get emotional when I talk about the American flag. So I really do appreciate everyone who was involved with making that happen. I know Mr. Rusty was still here at that time and spoke with Sean, but whoever was actually doing it, it means a lot to me and other people who spoke on that issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Deidre. Anyone else? Mr. Ivey, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening to the city council, Mr. Mayor and J.R. Great to see you too, Bob. And the audience, thank you. One thing I want to talk about is the Three Valleys Municipal Water District. And let me tell you about my background a little bit. I've had a little bit of experience in water. And I was the interim general manager of the Metropolitan Water District, the largest water wholesaler in the nation. And so I've been experienced and had the experience of working at the White House along with the Department of Interior and the State of California. I've been down the state. And I need you to understand that despite the politics, you got to forget about politics, we're in a serious, serious situation, very serious on the water supply. And you need somebody who has the experience, that knows how to have a dialogue, to be accepted into meetings by name, be called by people by name, and to be entered into the inner circles of the water industry throughout the United States and California and locally, to be able to represent our interests in the water field. We are going to be slashed. You think we've been dealing with problems now? You haven't seen anything yet. It's going to get very, very serious. In Australia, they had to be cut to 64 gallons a day for a whole family. That's how severe the crisis was with the drought. Next year's drought is going to be worse than you've ever seen this year. The snow is not coming. So what I'm asking is that you give careful consideration to a Laverne resident who has the experience to move forward with the water, to carry our water, so to speak, so that we are represented in this city by someone who knows what they're talking about. It's great to bring new blood into the city and new ideas into the water industry. And I'm an example of that. When I was young, I was a tech from Compton Metropolitan. I wanted to enter too. But it took me 45 years to really understand water. And any new person you bring in, no matter their education and their fervor for wanting to learn, they're not going to know in time to be potent with their arguments, with the people who make a difference with our water issue. So I'm asking that you consider Mr. Brian Bocock as to continue the work that he's done for us. The reason we're not in the severe water crisis in Laverne that we could have been is because Bocock was able to make decisions when he was with the city. And now that he's with the Three Valleys Board on how to make the water flow and to be here for our city. So the only problem that I have, and I just want to bring this up, and I thank all of you, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've been really great on that youth camp up in the mountain. But I do want you to understand that a lot of good my neighborhood think that they made it, but the mayor is a city sanctioned site. And I don't think it is. But with that, if they're thinking it, when they see stuff on there about the individual from Claremont wanting to be the water person, they're getting a little bit confused, saying, oh, the city wants this other guy to be there. So I don't think that was the intent or that's not the intent, that you're representing the city with that. But I just want to make sure for the record that it is clarified that it is not a city official website endorsing a candidate that is not a Laverne resident. So again, I just want to close because as I recall with your campaigns, you all said we're here to support the citizens, businesses, and the education of Laverne residents. And you have a highly capable person who's a Laverne resident that needs your consideration to consider to continue our legacy of great water supply for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Anyone else? Then we're going to close public comment, bring it up to the dais. Council comments. Councilwoman Lau, would you like to start?
Sure. Welcome to my favorite month of the year. It's not because it's my birthday month, but it may or may not be. Has something to do with it? But I just, a couple of events coming up that I wanted to bring up, just to remind folks of. It is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So, you know, it's really important. I know many of us in here probably know someone, may have personally experienced cancer in our lives. And it is really helpful to do the preventive measures, to take care of yourself and take care of your family. So go get your mammograms, make your doctor's appointments, do all the things that you need to do. Couple of things next, what's the 11th? Whatever day the 11th is, I can't... Tuesday, Thursday. Thank you. The Active Transportation Committee is meeting at 5:00 P.M. So if anyone is interested, please feel free to attend. And then next Saturday is Chalkpool of Things. We have Trump or Treat. We have Beer Walk. And the University of Laverne is hosting their homecoming. So even if you decide not to go to any of these very, very fun things that are happening on Saturday, just be aware that these things are happening within our city, and it may affect your travel and may affect traffic in certain areas. So just be cognizant of that.
That's Saturday, 15th.
Correct. Mm-hmm. And on the 19th, the Tri-City Mental Health will be having a meeting at 5:00 P.M. as well, and that will be via Zoom. So the other, the one that you always hear me talk about as well, blood drive. If you are willing and able, there is a blood drive at the University of Laverne on October 24th. You can sign up at the Red Cross site or you go down to the university and sign up there as well. And then last but not least, on the 25th, YFAC is having a meeting at 6:00 P.M. So as always, have a wonderful Halloween. I can't wait to see all of your costumes and your houses decorated because I do think our city does a fantastic job of decorating. So have a good week, have a good month, and be kind.
Councilwoman Crosby.
Thank you, Mayor. This past week, I had the privilege to go and talk to residents at the Twin Oaks Mobile Home Estates and share the news, any news of the city and listen to their concerns. And then went to the Casitas Mobile Home Estates. And they, the residents of the Casitas are very concerned about their homes and their situation upcoming from 2027. I do encourage any council members, if they want to go and visit them, they are there, open arms to be heard. And it was a very pleasant night on Thursday night. I'm going to be going to the Fodil Terrace this Friday as well. Just trying to make sure to be out there and listen to our residents. October is busy. October 15th, Saturday, it's going to be a packed house, especially downtown Laverne with all the great events. So be careful, especially on that beer walk. Make sure that you are walking or that there's any driver as well. So but have fun. And we will meet before our Halloween visit, so we'll talk about that then. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Just glad to be here tonight. We had a really nice trip to Catalina last weekend, this past weekend.
What'd you get?
Nothing.
It was a monster trip, and we caught mine. It was about...
That's actually, what do they call those? San Daves?
Shrimp.
Hey, it's the trip and being with your wife.
It was a fun trip. Yeah, this week, the 15th, that weekend is going to be a nice weekend here in town. Glad to be here for that and enjoy it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. I really appreciate you as we enter this month of breast cancer awareness. I did lose my mother to cancer five years ago, this October 21st. And just a reminder, please, just take care of yourself. It's very important to me. And at home, it's a tough time always for me during this time of the month. Heller, we continue to do good and take care of one another. Please take a moment also to the fire department that have the breast cancer awareness, the Fire Fighters Association and the Police Officers Association are having that. And so please take a moment to support our community wearing amazing shirts that they have. Be out there for sure getting some for my family. I went and got information on Narcan to be distributed.